I'd like to call the March 1st, 2022, meeting of the Buncombe County Commission to Order. Thank you all for being with us this evening. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge. Before we begin our meeting this evening, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence. I think many people across our community and across our country and across the world have been horrified by the events starting last week in the nation of Ukraine, a peaceful nation that was attacked by the Russian Federation, and have watched as families and people have had to flee their homes for safety to other nations and other parts of the country, and have taken up arms to protect their country and even their own neighborhoods. So, let's have a moment of silence to reflect on and think about the people who are in danger today. If people would like to offer a silent prayer for peace in Ukraine, they may, please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you. All right, I'd like to announce that any members of the public who are visiting, who are attending the county commission, who utilize public transit or the county parking deck to attend this meeting can get validation on your parking or transit passes by seeing one of the officers who's with us this evening, and you can get validation for that. I want to read the ethics reminder to the board. "In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which will have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the board today? There being none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the board at our meeting this evening." We now come to the consent agenda. Commissioners, are there any questions about any items on the consent agenda? All right, I'd like to request a motion to approve the consent agenda, but also, and to follow the remainder of the agenda as published, but we'd like to move the recognition for the recipient of the Order of the Longleaf Pine to handle that before public comment, and also to invite Pastor Leonti Ostapovich to also speak prior to public comment. Is there a motion to approve the agenda in that order? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. As many folks know, Buncombe County is a community that has a very strong Ukrainian population here in Buncombe County as well as Western North Carolina. So, like many members of the community, in particular, members of our Ukrainian community have been deeply affected personally by the events we've seen unfolding in Ukraine over the past week. So, I wanted to welcome Pastor Leonti Ostapovich to be with us, who is involved in community efforts here in Buncombe County to help support the people of Ukraine at this time. So, I'd like to invite him to come up, and you may speak from the podium. And I believe Dmitry is with him, and he will assist in sharing some information with us. So, thank you both very much for being with us. And we welcome hearing your thoughts about how people in our community can help support our friends and neighbors in their efforts at this time.
Yes, my name is Leonti Ostapovich. And I'm very sorry about my English. My English is still poor. And why I bring this handsome young man? Help me understand, me and you, what we're talking about.
We would like for you guys to tell us, what would you like to know? What do we start with? I think the commission would be interested in hearing your perspective on how the people in your community, both here and in Ukraine, are being affected by the invasion of the country, and anything that members of our community can do to help at this time for those who have been, who are being affected by the conflict, and some of the efforts within the Ukrainian community to lead those efforts. I would have never imagined that in the 21st century, in the heart of Europe, you would see and experience such horrific events. I don't want to describe exactly the things that go on over there. I am not a politician, I'm a pastor. And I want to talk to you about how we can together try and help those that are in this problem. Because today... Over half a million refugees. That are fleeing from their homes. Some of them don't have homes anymore. They're running to Slovakia, Romania, and Poland. And also to the borders of Ukraine, I'm sorry, Romania. And they are in need of help. I used to be the pastor of a church, and I passed that position on, and I have a mission now. I'm a missionary. And I opened up a mission, it's called Morning Star. Couple of years now, I'm serving in Ukraine. He sees many families with many children. A lot of widows, a lot of orphans. And then a lot of sick. And I try to help them. And as of right now, our community has united. So, we can at least minimally help our brothers and sisters that are running away, that are refugees. That are dispersed amongst other countries. And it's coming up Monday or Tuesday. Me and my team are flying out to Warsaw, Poland. We are collecting as much money as we can bring. Because this is a very urgent departure. We're going to be helping out in Poland. Be helping out in Ukraine as well. We have contact with pastors in Ukraine. That are located in Poland right now. They are working amongst refugees. They're taking them away from this. From the border. And they're taking them to camps. And it's a good thing that the Polish people are helping. And we're still worried about the people that are left in Ukraine, and there's a lot of them. And I want to thank the President of America. All these civilized Americans, people. That understand us. Understand the situation. That pray. And they're helping out a lot to our people in the country. And they're helping out a lot to our people in the country. And they're helping out a lot to our people in the country. And they're helping out a lot to our people in the country. I was on a phone call with one of the soldiers. And then what he was requesting? That he needs help in certain areas as well. Not just him, but the army. The truth is, the biggest problem today. Is that the skies are open. And through that, there's ruin that comes to many, many areas. I mean, this isn't that important, there's still something you can do. But the most important thing is taking... The life of people. The life of older people. The life of little children. And this is really painful. And we can't just look from the side. Truth be told, whenever this war started. I haven't really slept. I've been praying a lot. I've been thinking. Looking for opportunities, how can I help? So, using this opportunity today. I give my attention to you. If there's anything from your side. First, in order to help somehow in the government so that the skies are closed. Because this commander that I spoke to in the army. He said, if the skies are closed, we can deal with what's on land. I don't know what else to say. And we try and, 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 we're taking the opportunity to collect as much medical supplies and equipment as we can for the wounded. So, we're looking for this opportunity. And again, if your heart is open. If you want to take, if you want to help. We would be more than happy. Any sort of help. Any help is a blessing. As of right now, that's all I have to say. If there's questions. Dmitry and Pastor Ostapovich, thank you both so much for being with us and for what you are doing to help your community, both here and in Ukraine today during what's the hardest of times. And we understand that our, you know, national government is helping in these response efforts. At the local level, there may not be that much we as county government can do. You know, our role in community affairs is fairly defined around local issues, but we wanted to provide this opportunity for you to share information about how people in our community can help support these efforts. One of your friends and colleagues that I was speaking with over the weekend shared some more information with me about how people can be in touch with your organization and other organizations that are involved in these relief efforts. So, I'd like to share this with the county staff so that we can help make this information available within our community and just really urge everyone in Asheville and Buncombe County who is moved by what you see happening in Ukraine today to please do what we all can as individuals and as a community to help support these active organizations that are directly responding to those who are in need at this time. So, thank you so much for being with us, and we will be thinking about you as you travel to Europe to help support the Ukrainian people at this time. Thank you so much for being here. And we thank you for the opportunity to be here and to present this. It's very important to us, thank you. Thank you, and we know... Thank you, thank you so much. And you're welcome to, yes, you don't have to stay. Thank you, thank you so much for being here. And please stay in touch, please stay in touch with us. All right. Commissioners, the next item on our agenda is recognition of the recipient of the Order of the Longleaf Pine Society and of Mr. Walt Ward. And Heath Smith from our Veterans Service Office is here to help present this item. Thank you so much for being with us.
Good afternoon, my name is Heath Smith. I supervise the Veterans Service Office here in Buncombe County. I want to thank Chairman Newman, our commissioners, and Ms. Pender for allowing us to honor Walt here today. I was thinking about trying to paint a picture about what Walt has meant to our office and the veteran community in Buncombe County, and even the state of North Carolina. And I think I would probably fail tremendously in that endeavor. So, what I wanted to do real quick was read the nomination letter that I sent the governor's office. It'll take a quick second here, and hopefully that can fill in some of the gaps. "I'm writing this letter of recommendation for Everett Walton Ward. Walt has been a veteran service officer in Buncombe County for over a decade now. I have been Walt's direct supervisor for the past three years, and prior to this, his colleague for two. I cannot overstate Walt's impact in our office and to the veteran population of Western North Carolina. Walt's entire adult life has been in service to his country. He has honorably served in the Peace Corps, the United States Air Force, and spent the last forty-plus years in service to our nation's veterans at the Department of Veteran Affairs and in the Buncombe County Veterans Service Office. Walt is a true leader who has developed an almost unmatched base of knowledge in this line of work. Many, many times, those retiring from federal service after thirty years spend the next chapter of their life in retirement. This was not the case for Walt. Walt was approached about a job opportunity as a veteran service officer in Buncombe County and ended up accepting. This employment would be a significant pay decrease for Walt, but would allow him to serve veterans day-to-day on the front lines. Walt's knowledge of the VA claims process has assisted our county's veterans in securing millions of dollars in disability compensation and pension benefits. In the description of this award, it states, "For persons who have made significant contributions to the state and their communities through their service and exceptional accomplishments. I can't think of anyone more deserving than Walt Ward. His leadership, knowledge, work ethic, and demeanor will be nearly impossible to replace. Having Walt as a colleague and subordinate for the past five years has been one of the most valued professional experiences of my life. So, I would like to congratulate Walt and commend him on a life of selfless service to others. And with no further ado, I would like to present him with the Order of the Longleaf Pine."
Thank you, Heath. The last ten years have been the most rewarding part of my professional career. Buncombe County, you can be proud of the services we provide to veterans, the hospital, the ABCCM, world-class homeless program for veterans. It's been my pleasure and honor to be involved with all that. Thank you.
Congratulations. All right. Commissioners, we now come to public comment. And we have a lot of folks who have signed up. So, I am, is, we have sometimes when we have had very long, very large numbers of people sign up, we have sometimes made some decisions around how long we're going to do public comment, because this could very well go on maybe several hours if we got to everyone. So, in the past, we have sometimes said we would limit it to one hour. So, I just wanted to check in with this, with the commissioners to see if we want to set some time parameter on this item. There's a lot of folks here who want to speak about support for Big Ivy. There's also some folks who want to talk about the Dollar General, I think the zoning issue there, and they're, I think that's the large majority. If there's folks who are here who have other comments they want to make, I would want to recognize them just to make sure that if there's other issues that people want to speak to the commission about that they don't get, not heard. And before we proceed further on this, I do want to just share with the folks who are here to talk about Big Ivy, and there's a lot of folks in the overflow room, so I hope that they can, they can hear us too. We had a great presentation during our briefing meeting this afternoon from Will Harland from Friends of Big Ivy, did a great job. The county commission has adopted two previous resolutions supporting protection for Big Ivy. And based on what we learned from Will earlier today, the commission has invited Friends of Big Ivy to present the county with proposed language so that we can file a formal objection, a comment to the Forest Service in support, so that we can support full protection of Big Ivy. So, I anticipate that we'll do that at our next meeting. So, thanks for everyone's work on that, and I think the county's totally on board with your efforts. All right. So, consensus that we won't go more than an hour. I'm sorry if there's some folks who won't get heard, but maybe we'll try to, I just encourage everyone to speak. You've got up to three minutes, but if you can make your point sooner, it means more of your neighbors can get heard in this process too. So, brevity is valued. The first person who signed up is Sophia, who's here to talk about the Dollar General. So, come on up. That's fine, yeah, that's fine, Sophia, thanks. No, no problems. Do you want to go after Matt? Okay, so Matt and then Sophia, and then I think Kathy is also on the same issue, so you can go after her, Sophia.
All right, thank you, commissioners. I'm Matt Barker, I'm from Swananoa, with a group that is organizing as Swananoans for Respectful Development. I'm here to, with the encouragement of State Representative John Ager, to bring to your attention violations of Department of Transportation policy in the driveway placement of the Dollar General in Swananoa on Roland Road. In short, the Dollar General driveway is far too close to US-70. We know that you are not over the Department of Transportation, but we urge you to join us in urging them to address with immediate action this violation of their policy and the developer's permit for placement of the driveway. All the details are in this twelve-page document that we have prepared. The short version is that the NC DOT policy is unambiguous, the driveway permit issued to the developer is unambiguous, and the requirement is that a driveway off a corner of an intersection have at least one hundred feet of corner clearance. That is to allow traffic turning in off US-70 to not collide with traffic leaving the Dollar General store at the same time. This is not a minor violation at the Dollar General in Swananoa. The permit calls for the driveway to be placed one hundred and twenty feet from US-70? It is not. It's supposed to have one hundred feet of corner clearance? It does not. View of the site plan and measurements on-site confirm that this driveway placement falls far short of that minimum requirement and creates a dangerous situation for drivers in our community. How far short does it fall? Is it seventy-five feet instead of a hundred feet? Is it fifty feet instead of a hundred feet? No. The distance of corner clearance in the site plan and on-site at the Dollar General is six point five feet. Again, the language of NC DOT policy is unambiguous, one hundred foot minimum. The language of the permit that the developer filled out himself says that it will be one hundred and twenty feet north of US-70. It is not. Six point five feet. We've already had a near-miss collision in that location that a neighbor has reported to us. I urge you, look at this document, become as outraged as we are, and tell NC DOT they have to inspect this driveway immediately, close this driveway immediately, and require the developer to revise their site plan and conform, in absolute conformance to NC DOT policy as their permit requires. This is urgent. They just received their building permit, and footers are being poured now. They want to hurry up and get this store built before we can enforce the policy and protect the lives of our Swananoa neighbors. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Sophia Papadopoulos, and I am a longtime resident of Swananoa. As you well know, Swananoa is one of the few untapped areas for major development in Buncombe County. When I purchased my home in 2006, Swananoa real estate agent at the time said, "Hold on to your asset, development's coming your way within the next ten to fifteen years." During that time, I worked really hard, learning the history of the Swananoa Valley, reaching out to us residents, doing my part to find common ground where development and zoning is concerned, so that we all might be able to come to the table to join forces to see respectful and safe development happen in our area. Can I take this off? As you, as you also probably know, Swananoa was in a heated debate over revised zoning incorporation several years ago, and ultimately, those two things did not happen. We were left at the mercy of Buncombe County Planning Department with very little zoning rules. Thankfully, the Buncombe County Steering Committee has been formed, and future plans for our area are in the process of being made. That being said, the current situation with the Dollar General being built adjacent to my child's playground on one side, a neighborhood on two other sides, and a dangerous intersection on US-70 really has me questioning who has the best interests of our valley at heart where development's concerned. As we continue to dig deeper, after being completely blindsided by this project, because the zoning law does not require them to notify us, by the way, because it's not that big of a deal, we realize that there are several inconsistencies in their findings, in our findings, excuse me, compared to what we've been told by planning and zoning as well as the DOT. We are here today to respectfully ask that this project is brought to an immediate halt until we get answers regarding the legitimacy of the site plan where the entrance is concerned. The current location of the entrance is a major safety issue, and if it is... The current location of the entrance is a major safety issue, and if it is left as is, we will most certainly see an increase in accidents. We are not opposed to development, but we are going to be insistent that the safety of our residents come first. We have neighbors, families, and childrens to consider. This is a major pathway for art space drop-off and pickup, so we have, we have to put this as a priority. There is always an increased traffic in the area, and the neighborhood has come to deal with that, but this is, this is a building on top of, of it and is increasing our risk. We're asking for your support and insisting on an immediate NC DOT inspection and closure of the Dollar General driveway, for the safety of our community, as well as an investigation and public report on how the design, submission, and approval of the current plan came to be. Thank you.
All right, Kathy Stillwell? And then Gabriel Price will follow.
Thank you. I live on Roland Road, and I was afraid of going to do this, but we are very concerned about the safety of our children, the neighbors, and what it's going to do to our neighborhood. We need help with this. That entrance is very, very dangerous. You cannot take a freight delivery 50 feet and try to go in at the angle that is presently there. They will have to swing out, they'll have to swing out to Highway 70 just to get into Roland Road. Roland Road is a neighborhood side street. It was never designed for a commercial property, and I understand NS, I understand residential, I know, I know all of that, but my eyes tell me different, and my neighbors, everyone are very concerned, not to mention what it's going to do to the value of our property. We have, this is a dangerous situation. I don't need three minutes for that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Gabriel Price?
Hi. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak on behalf of my family and community. Again, my name is Gabrielle Price. My husband and my three children are residents of Roland Road in Swananoa. We live approximately 300 feet from the proposed Dollar General site that is being planned on Roland Road. Previous to the construction of the Dollar General, I often feared for the safety of my family when pulling off or onto Highway 70 via Roland Road. The current construction of the Dollar General, as well as this proposed exit and entrance, creates an unfathomable safety risk, not only for the members of this community, but also for the Dollar General customers. Just yesterday, after picking up my five-year-old from preschool, I was nearly struck by a construction vehicle pulling out from the Dollar General site as we were turning onto Roland Road. I ask that you please stand by the residents of Swananoa and help us keep ourselves safe by reassessing the site. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, I'm going to list the next several speakers so that folks can kind of be prepared to, to speak, and if you're in one of the overflow areas, you could come on in if you hear your name called, so you can be sort of lined up. The next speaker is Bob Wagner, and then following Bob, we'll have Ed Stein and Anna Littman, and then Emily Disnov. Hey, Bob.
All right, hello. My name is Bob Wagner, and I'm one of the co-directors at Mountain True, and I'll keep my comments short based on Brownie, Commissioner, his comments earlier, and talking to Will Harland. So Mountain True's mission is to champion resilient forests, clean waters, and healthy communities in the southern Blue Ridge. We have over 16,000 members, over 5,000 of them in Buncombe County. Our mountains in the craggy Big Ivy portion of Pisgah Forest is among the most biodiverse in North America. My kids have grown up hiking its trails and enjoying its tree canopy, its rivers, and views, just like many of our members. I'm sure you understand the importance of having nature near for the health of the community, not to mention its economic benefit. It's a big reason why people love both living in and visiting Asheville and Buncombe County. Unfortunately, in its draft final decision, the U.S. Forest Service has proposed a plan that does not protect ecologically significant areas of public lands in Buncombe County. The Pisgah and Nanahale Forest Plan targets 4,000 acres of the most ancient and most biologically diverse forests in the craggy Big Ivy area. Big Ivy supports over 40 rare and endangered plant and animal species. Mountain True supports the alternative proposed by the Nanahale-Pisgah Forest Partnership, which would protect the biological, recreational, and scenic resources of this region. We want to thank the Buncombe County Commission for its past emphasis on the importance of this area, and given the recent forest plan proposal which threatens this treasured area, we hope that the commission will once again affirm its support for protecting all of craggy and Big Ivy. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Bob. All right, Ed Stein. And while Ed's coming up, Lamar, I've got a question. I've got this one sign-in sheet, but is there, there's another one, right? And do you have those? Okay. Hey, Ed, go ahead.
Good evening. I, I'm not part of any environmental group, but I'm here this evening to encourage you to protect the Big Ivy craggy area with the proposal that's before you. Some of you may recall what the Davidson River area in Brevard was like when that area depended on forest products as part of its economic engine. They've converted over to a recreational economy, and it's better for the forest, and it's better for the community, and the same thing can be happening here. To have that kind of forest at that kind of elevation threatened by logging in this day and age is, it's unfathomable for the reasons that Mr. Wagner just mentioned. So I really encourage you all to protect that area. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anna Littman? And then Emily Disnov? And Brayton Barathe Lane, or I'm probably not pronouncing it correctly, but they would be next. Go ahead.
Let the people that come up to speak, once they speak, to leave, so the other people can already come.
Yep, thank you, thank you. Yeah, so as Lamar was just saying, once you've spoken, if you could exit the commission chambers, because we do have a big overflow area, so it'd be great to have other folks be able to come in and get a seat in the commission chambers. Thanks, Lamar. All right, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Anna Littman, and I'm the owner of Ivy Creek Family Farm. We are a vegetable farm that is located about two miles from the North Fork section of the proposed area to be slated as a logging area. I also grew up in Ox Creek, which is also on the plan, open to logging, and I'm here to thank you, most, most importantly, for the support that you've shown the forest in the past. You are going to see tonight that there are lots of people who, who feel very strongly about this issue. As a farmer, the Ivy, the headwaters of the Ivy River are about two miles from my farm. When I was looking for a farm and farmland, the quality of the water was incredibly important to me. We looked for four years. I'm here representing my farm, but I'm also here representing my neighbors. Big Ivy is a community of farmers, and the waters are incredibly important to us. Recreation is incredibly important to us. Our community has come together in so many ways, as farmers, as people who love to hike, as people who see the importance of, of this resource to the generations who have been there for hundreds of years. My neighbors love the forest just as much as I do. They love to go ramp hunting, and so we all support it, and we all appreciate it, and we all appreciate you being willing to, being willing to hear us tonight.
Thank you. All right, next up is Emily Disnov.
I'm not Dr. Disnov, but I hope you'll accept me as a poor substitute. Pam Evans with the Southern Environmental Law Center, and want to thank the commission for your leadership on this issue and for being willing to participate in the formal processes that, the bureaucratic processes that result in, in a forest plan. To this point in the history of Big Ivy, the only thing that has really protected that area has been the show of people and, and public support for protections. The Forest Service has never put it beyond its reach. You know, the Forest Service has always wanted to leave the opportunity to go in there and do, and do timber production, and they have, in the past, gone in there to do timber production, not at the levels that would permanently impair the area. There's still so much good stuff left in it. The ideal solution here is permanent protection, and we know that the commission has supported in the past a national scenic area designation that would put this above the administrative fray that would keep all these people from having to show up periodically to say, "We still care about Big Ivy." Until that happens, you know, we're, we're counting on the support from the commission. And the easiest way to get to where we need to be in the future is to get this plan right now, and what it's going to take to get the plan right now is to participate in the objection process. This is a pre-decisional objection process, so I want to be clear that the Forest Service has not finalized its plan. It's got a final-ish plan now, and this is the time when it wants to hear from the public. I think I was very disappointed, as, as many of us were, that consensus recommendations were not adopted in the final-ish plan. And of all those consensus recommendations, protection for Big Ivy was the, had the most unanimity. So although it has been disappointing so far to see where they've been headed, it's not over yet, and we thank you for your help in getting us where we need to go.
Okay, all right. Next up is, and I apologize if I mispronounced anybody's names, Brayton. After that will be Don Yelton, then John Kelleher, and Jenny Wilds. And for folks who are not in the commission chambers, we do have a couple of extra seats open now, so if you hear your name called, you can come on up, and there's probably a seat available to sit in while you're waiting. All right. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Rob Lenfesti. I'm the owner of Mandala Chocolate, Mandala Springs. My property actually shares two sides with the section of forest in question, and first I want to thank you for your continued support. Like, the community recognizes you as allies, and I want to first share my appreciation for you. I've personally helped to raise tens of millions of dollars for the conservation of forest ecosystems around the globe. I am a conservation ecologist, and I am probably the single most intimate person with this particular piece of land. I know it comprehensively. I know the springs, the little pockets of incredible biodiversity, the boulder fields, and I can tell you that it is unequivocally not a place that can be logged if it's assessed properly. This is a section of forest that is amongst the most prime examples that we have on the planet of biodiversity, and it is precious. It is literally in one of the most valuable view sheds, economically speaking, in the entire country, which is that entire craggy view shed with the snowball trail, and it is one of the single most valuable resources that we can maintain. And I am joined right now with a very large group of, of community members who are fiercely protective of this forest, and I want to just make it really clear that we do not foresee any possible way that this piece of forest will be logged, and there's a lot of community members that are willing to stand up to defend it in whatever way is necessary, because these, this is our future. This is future generations, this is the forest that we love, this is the place that we go to find solace, to connect with ourselves, and to connect with the beautiful nature of this region that we call home. And yeah, it will be protected, one way or another. So we, once again, appreciate your continued support. This message is addressed to the local community to please stand up and to please share your voice and take part in helping us to protect this, and to the U.S. Forest Service that there is consensus, wide consensus, on the protection of this, and we hope that they recognize, acknowledge, and respond to that consensus by also designating this part of our beautiful Pisgah National Forest for protection. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, come on up.
Hello, and thank you for your presence today, and thank you for hearing all these voices and, you know, sharing your thoughts before we got started, that, you know, this feels like a unanimous decision to protect the space. Some points that I have here, you know, if we're purely looking at this from a business perspective, you know, where we're thinking about dollars and economic impact and things of that nature, lots of people get a lot of help in recreation, you know, going out and hiking, going with their family to these places, going and seeing, you know, the beauty that, that is in this land. Man, 30 times more income is created through recreation than logging. 75% of jobs in rural communities come from recreation. I encourage you to take your families on a weekend trip out to these mountains and see for yourself why so many people move here. If we're getting into biodiversity in plants, we have medication, natural medication, things that people synthesize into pills, into other forms of, you know, healthcare for everyone. But natural medication, you know, there's, there's biodiversity out there that can fight things like cancer, increase, you know, health benefits like stress relief, reducing blood pressure, and strengthening the immune system. So I ask that you guys consider these things when making a final decision, and I thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. All right, Don, your turn, and then John Kelleher, Jenny Wilds, James Heinel, and Gina Elrod will follow.
I normally do a good job in three minutes, but there's no way in the world that I can communicate to you what I'm going to say in three minutes, but I'll give it a shot. First and foremost, I'm talking to you as a biologist. Do you know what makes a tree die? A tree dies when it can't fix enough CO2, that horrible pollutant CO2, to build up enough mass to have that live ring around the tree. Y'all familiar with that live ring around the tree? Because the middle of the tree is hardwood, it's not alive anymore. And when it can't fix enough carbon to do that, it dies. And when it dies, if it's a big, large tree, what does it do? It destroys a lot of vegetation, and it lays on the ground. I suggest that every one of you travel and go up to the head of Barnersville and look at the Coman Boundary, that they wanted to cut a while back, but everybody got up and said, "We can't cut, we can't cut, we can't cut." It's now got dead hemlock all over the place, and if a fire breaks out there, Katie bar the door. So trees will die. Now, your Forest Service plan said that there was areas that needed new growth. How you going to get it? You're going to get it one of these ways. You're going to manage it and pull the trees out, which, by the way, the trees produce lumber, and what is lumber used for? To build affordable housing, or is it unaffordable? Because now, you can't find lumber, and everybody's not cutting trees. So you got to think beyond your little world, and you've got to get out of that office up there and out behind that seat and go to Barnersville. I beg you to, please, and you will see what an unmanaged, uncontrolled, uncut forest looks like. And my dad used, was one of the people involved in hauling the timber out of the Coman Boundary when it was first cut, and the only job he had at 13, when he was kicked out of his house, was working in a sawmill. So you're talking to somebody that knows it, that's lived it and seen it go. So I beg you, I can give you a whole lot more, but I don't want to burden you with it, because somebody would put the word out and everybody flocks in. And as you can see, I'm not talking about any particular project. I'm not talking about Save the Ivy or whatever. I'm talking about the facts that you all need to consider, and I'll give you a favor. I'll give you 19 seconds extra. I'll give you nineteen seconds extra.
I'm Jenny Wilds, and I live on the corner of Roland Road and U.S. Seventy in Swannanoa, across from a narrow neighborhood, or across a narrow neighborhood road from where the new Dollar General is going to be. According to the site plan, the only driveway for the store will empty into Roland Road, which is literally, it's about forty feet from my living room window. And so every car that exits the Dollar General will shine its lights three hundred sixty-five days a year into my living room. Roland Road is too narrow, and the distance from the corner is too short for longer vehicles to make the turn without encroaching in my yard and possibly hitting the cars that are parked there. Although I did not witness it, damage has already been done to the landscaping timbers in my yard, probably by construction equipment. ArtSpace School parents already use our neighborhood roads as part of their pickup-and-drop-off lanes every day, which causes delay in traffic twice a day, every day during the school year. Speaking for myself, I'm very happy to have ArtSpace as one of our neighbors. I love having the school there. I wish ArtSpace could purchase the lot where the Dollar General is going. I believe they're an asset to the community. The traffic that Dollar General adds will be a tipping point, I think. We are already, there's already way too much traffic with the pickup-and-drop-off traffic, and my driveway is often blocked by that traffic. The lot is surrounded by, on three sides, by residential zoning. We thought that R1 zoning would offer protections to the homeowners from anything that would detract from our ability to enjoy our own property without the intrusion of the extra traffic, commercial lighting, delivery trucks, foot traffic, and possible crime that Dollar General will bring. We're asking that the construction be halted until the situation can be reevaluated. Thank you.
I always know it's me when people pause it before the last name. Hi, good evening. Thank you all for being here and hearing from all of us. I hope that you brought coffee or something to keep you awake with the masses that have just been both overwhelming and wonderful to see coming out for this forest. My name is Hannah Fergewell, and I am a resident of Buncombe County. I'm also the vice chair for the North Carolina Sierra Club's Executive Committee and a resident of Barnardsville. My property sits right on the Ivy River, and my water comes from the North Fork, and this is a really important issue to me for many reasons, including those. In the newest release draft, which we're all here up in arms about this evening, this critically important and rare forest is designated as a priority logging area, and the area in which I'm speaking is the four thousand acres of the North Fork, which is part of a larger tract of Big Ivy and Craggy area that we're all aware of. And thank you for your historic support of this proposal, and we hope that you'll continue to support this proposal moving forward. As we can only imagine, logging this section of the forest is going to have dire water quality consequences for the residents of Barnardsville, habitat destruction for ecosystems and wildlife, and impact on the river itself. Living at the edge of the Ivy River, I can tell you I've had over a hundred thousand dollars' worth of flood damage in previous years, in the last four years since I began residing on this particular piece of property. And we know this is only going to increase as climate change intensifies rainfall and we see erosion from both logging on private and hopefully not, but potentially, public lands. As a statewide leader in conservation in Buncombe County and also a Big Ivy member, I'm here today in my official capacity with the Sierra Club, supporting Winoka, the Western North Carolina Sierra Club, as well as an expecting mother, which you can't see, who is overwhelmed by being out in the world right now, but this is a very important issue to me. So thank you for taking the time to listen. Winoka has, has come before the Commission in the past to endorse the proposed Craggy National, big, excuse me, Craggy Mountain and Big Ivy National Scenic Area, and we've appreciated that support in the past. What we hope now is that you will continue to support that. In the formal objection period, Winoka and many other organizations on which you're hearing from tonight have all been formally involved in that, and we know you all hopefully will support that as well, as we continue this final leg of the plan and hope that when they get the final plan out, they will hear our voices, your voices, and our community, and put the needs of the community and the desires of our community ahead of the Forest Service's economic decision and the decision-makers at the top of that line. We believe that all of Craggy is considered important, not just the area in which they have currently put into a scenic area, but the four thousand acres is all part of that larger forest that we really want to see and have it remain intact. And so that's really what I'm here tonight with Sierra Club and both as a resident at the base of this, this mountain and this river, asking you to sign onto the proposal and formally object to this and during this coming period. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to check and see if a couple of the folks we called in earlier have, are here. John Kelleher, James Heinel, Gina Elrod. All right, the next folks who have signed up, Victoria Reiser, Catherine Pesky, Elise Danna-Lattis, Karen Hyman. Hey.
Hi, thank you.
And, I'm sorry, which one were you?
I'm Victoria, yes.
Great, all right, great, Victoria, thanks.
Thank you very much for letting me speak. I'm standing here as a full-time, long-term resident of Big Ivy and Craggy Gardens, and I'm grateful that you have, in the past, protected with your words and, and measures this logging proposal for the Big Ivy and Craggy Gardens Federal Forests, and I'm asking you, of course, to continue to do that. I think that protecting U.S. forests is an essential part of meeting our commitments under the Paris Agreement. Mature and old-growth forest ecosystems can store even more carbon per acre than tropical rainforests, and as we know, what's been going on in the Amazon, those have been depleted considerably. But protecting them does more than store carbon. The proposed logging will only decimate areas vital to our Appalachian culture, heritage, ecosystems, which include plants and animals, some endemic only to Big Ivy that have flourished here for millennia. Older forests are a key solution to confronting the planet's extinction crisis as they protect species from more extreme climate impacts. Establishing permanent protections for these natural carbon reservoirs is directly in line with our country's goal to protect thirty percent of lands and waters by 2030. Conserving these trees is also key to making our communities and lands more climate resilient as they are the most fire-resilient. You can see the impact fire has had on other parts of our country. It's foolish for us to ignore these facts. On behalf of the people, the forests, the animals, and all of us who value our interconnection and their continued existence, including the people who travel from far and wide to experience them as ecotourists in our area, we cannot consider endangering this precious area of our planet and our community. This planet is not some spinning ball of free resources that is ours for the taking without checks and balances. Our relationship with this area should be reciprocal. The evidence of our mismanagement is everywhere you look today, and I speak for myself and future generations in asking you to keep this area uncut, and please continue to support its designation of a protected wilderness area. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up, Catherine Pesky, followed by Elise Danna-Lattis, Karen Hyman. Will Harland is next. Hi.
Hi, I'm Catherine Pesch. Thank you, guys, for letting me speak tonight. I'm a senior environmental student at UNCA, and during my four years here, I've grown a great appreciation for our forest, and I've spent much time as a student exploring them and studying them. As someone who is now responsible for the future of our environment, it is very concerning to me. We cannot continue to use our natural resources at the rate that we are going. The plan from the U.S. Forest Service will affect our environment and our communities for up to thirty years or longer, and it is important that we include balance in this plan. Our natural areas need more protection now than ever. Many planned animal species that can only be found in Western North Carolina are at risk from logging and loss of habitat. Climate change and previous development have already made it so difficult for many of these native species to survive. And if we log these areas, not only will we lose ancient trees, we could lose over forty species that can only be found in the Big Ivy area. Asheville will no longer be the mountain retreat that many admire for, many admire it for. Popular trails and photo spots will be bare and lose appeal to the thousands that travel here every year. The pristine waters that are used for the many farms and breweries in our area will be polluted. I want to thank you, guys, for listening and considering a plan that includes more preservation of land, and I hope that you will agree with all of the farmers, outdoor enthusiasts, business owners, students, families, and other community members that also object to the forest plan. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Elise Danna-Lattis. And then Karen Hyman, Will Harland, has signed up if you'd like to speak again. Jennifer Elaine, Miles Woody is after that. Hi.
Sharon Nagana, medical gun, doggo de wa. Hello, everyone. My name is Mary Crowe. I would like to thank my sister Elise for giving me her slot and her time to be here today. I am a citizen of the Eastern Band of Cherokee from the Qualo Boundary in Cherokee, North Carolina, just fifty-five miles from here. This area that you're discussing this evening, the Pisgah Nandaheva area, this whole area in, in general, is our original territory of the Ania Weyah, also known as the Cherokee. I want to thank my brothers and sisters here today who are, who are in opposition of, of logging in this area, and I want to also talk to our brothers and sisters who are in that logging industry. What I'm here to talk about and ask this Commission or to consider is the indigenous principles of just transition. What this is, is that we would ask that people start looking at us, the indigenous peoples of this land, and just transition into a more understanding as to what we need to look for in our future. One thing that we're talking about is using recyclable materials, the things that we see around us today that we use, and I, I've been to a lot of communities where we've seen that. I've come here, even during COVID, and seen the mutual aid that took place. And what we are looking at in fossil fuel industry, as well as the logging industry, everything that is detrimental to Mother Earth, we need her. She doesn't need us. But what I'm here today is to ask this Commission, is to seriously look at what is it that we can do as people to come together on a common ground? We know that we have to do something immediately to stop this climate crisis that we're in. We hear it all over the place. We have to start really seriously focusing on how do we protect one another? We've just been through a crisis situation. We see what people had to go through when the food shortage is cut off. We are now looking at supply chains being stopped. But more than anything else, there is a war that seriously affects us. And if you look at the things that they're doing in sanctioning these countries, we're just a people. The indigenous peoples of this land who have been taken advantage of quite a bit. The history of this area here was stolen, and we hear that. Stolen land, on stolen land. What I ask you is, well, we ask you to give it back, but we don't know that, that's, we know that that's not going to happen, so what we ask you to do...
I'm sorry to interrupt your time.
Is help us to protect it and understand that, you know, this is Cherokee land. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. We appreciate it. And I appreciate that, too. I would ask that folks not applaud or make any comments following when people come in. We want people to be able to make their comments without having feedback from the public, so thank you there. All right. Karen Hyman.
I'm Karen Hyman, and I've been a scientist in this area for almost forty years now and have some family that goes way back. And I'm going to cut my talk short because a lot of people said everything already. I do beg to differ for the one gentleman who was here talking about the hemlock trees that we need to be managing so trees don't die, and obviously, we don't need to be cutting down trees to keep them from dying, and hemlocks wouldn't be harvested for timber anyway. Anyway, thank you all for being supportive of this, and we hope that someday we can both affect the forest plan and also have this as North Carolina's first National Scenic Area, because we are the ones who determine the sustainability and the future for Buncombe County. And the forest plan is not listened to the public or the science enough in its, in the current version. The Forest Service prominently displays that one of its core goals of upholding biodiversity. And since Big Ivy is one of the top three places in the Nanahel Pisgah for old growth, good quality forests that buffer the old growth and biodiversity, why would we not keep this gem? Old-growth forests are incredibly rare. We're down to about maybe one percent in the eastern U.S. of old growth that's still remaining. So much has already slipped through our fingers. And we've also learned that old growth is completely irreplaceable. Once it's gone, it's gone, and you can never recreate the forest. It's like bulldozing the art museums or whatever, and saying you'll paint new paintings, except for these forests have even been going on for thousands of years, much longer. I guess that, that's, that's the main point, really. I could go into detail on all the reasons why old growth is, is so irreplaceable. I'll skip that. And of course, logging Big Ivy creates no local permanent jobs, whereas we know, of course, recreation tourism create way more jobs for our future. We've been doing this fight now for twenty-seven years with the last plan, with this plan. We hope this time we can get some real protection and also get the permanent protection through the scenic area. At one time, the Atlanta Constitution included a quote from the Smithsonian Institute calling the old growth of Big Ivy heirlooms of forestry. I would like to say that I hope that we can leave this forestry, this heirloom, and this legacy to the future generations here by protecting it. Thank you.
All right, thanks. The folks who signed up next are Will Harland, Jennifer Elaine, Miles Woody, then Sharon, Sherrod Brady, and Lori Tenerman. Is Will Harland or Jennifer Elaine here? I think Will may have given up his time. He spoke earlier, so come on up.
Yeah. Thank you for letting me speak. I almost didn't, just because people have already said so much of what I wanted to say, but I feel very strongly about this area. I'm a resident. I live in Barnardsville. I went to the community center in Big Ivy, probably, I guess it was in twenty-fourteen or twenty-fifteen, one of those two years, probably, to protest this very thing, this very threat to that area. Came again here to this building with my son when there was a meeting regarding the same issue. And I guess I find it unfortunate that even though, over and over again, the people who live here and this commission express the desire to keep this area protected, it continues to be threatened. It's, I don't, I don't understand why that, that has to be that way. It doesn't make sense to me. I would like to reemphasize the points that have already been made about the irreplaceability of the biodiversity in this area, and also... And also, just, I, I would like to also emphasize the fact that not everything can be measured in dollars. Dollars don't fully measure the value of a place or of a people. They don't measure the va, it doesn't measure the value of our principles, our ethics. The things that we hold dear cannot be measured in, in terms of dollars. For those who are not, unable to see the world in any other way, then they can hopefully recognize that ecotourism brings in dollars, that the property values in the area, which would be severely impacted in a negative way if the logging goes through, would also, you know, that, that can be viewed in terms of dollars. But I would hope to appeal to a higher sense of what is right in, in so many ways beyond the needs and wants of human beings to extend to the biodiversity of the plants and animals. And just to the, to the val, the mental health value of that area is amazing, especially in the times of COVID. Just to have a place to go, to, to find some peace in something that's not attached to anything that humans have created is-
Thank you.
-is worth some, it's beyond words. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Sorry I went over.
No, it's okay. So we've only got about ten minutes left. There's about fifty more people who've signed up, so we're only going to be able to get through a few more. I apologize for that. So for the folks to, I call on next, if you do want to keep your comments brief, that'd be great, because it means we'll be able to hear from a few more folks. Miles Woody, Sherrod Brady, Lori Timmerman, Chelsea Waxstein are the next folks who've signed up. Are any of those folks here? Yeah, come on up.
I'm Miles Woody, and I wouldn't be here today if I wasn't like scared for my future and my peers' future with what's going on to the earth right now. And it is scary to be in a position where you have no power over all of these decisions that are being made by older and more powerful people, but that will, in the long run, be affecting you. So I just want to say that, like, think about the, the future and what this is doing to people you know, like your grandkids. Think about what they're going to be living through, if they'll be able to see all the beautiful forests that maybe you grew up in or you grew up around, that you had the luxury to go see as a kid. The future generations might not have those luxuries. So I just want to remind you that it's not your future that you're deciding in the long run when you take the earth away from other people. And I also have a comment from my friend Thunder, who would like me to say and remind everyone that it's your duty as a non-indig, as non-indigenous people who have the power to decide the fate of our remaining land, to preserve as much as possible. The land does not belong to any of you or most of us who are listening. It is our family, our future, and all we have as a young, as a young indigenous person. They're repulsed by the proposition to log this land. Thank you. That's all I'd like to say.
Thanks, Miles. Sherrod Brady.
Oh, and thank you for letting me speak. I have lived in the Barnardsville area for over thirty-five years, so this is very near and dear to me. So once again, here we are again, trying to save this incredible land that does not need to be logged. The boundary is unique, it's rich, it's got rare plant and wildlife, wildflower species, old growth forests, and some of the most pristine water I've ever seen. And it's also the water that we reveal and local communities depend on. Logging would also seriously compromise all of this, along with countless wildlife that make this their home. Additionally, logging would cause significant erosion of the mountains, and I'm afraid that once the logging and clearcutting began, that it just will never end. We are the protectors and the defense of this land, and we simply can't allow this proposal of destruction to happen, not now and not ever. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori Timmerman.
Hello, I'm Lori Timmerman, and so I'm speaking as a newcomer to the area who discovered Big Ivy and was enchanted and want to see this area preserved. Over a hundred, one thousand five hundred acres of old growth forest in Big Ivy will be targeted for the highest priority logging, and headwaters of the Ivy will also be targeted for logging. Our community's clean water will be affected by the logging of the Ivy River headwaters, and this represents Buncombe County's last and only old growth forest. This forest plan targets the Mountain to Sea Trail and the Snowball Trail, two of the most popular trails along the Blue Ridge River. It will also log the panoramic Craggy Viewshed along the Blue Ridge Parkway, and Craggy is the most popular and photographed vista on the Parkway. Big Ivy is home to over forty rare and endangered species. So in this process, the Forest Service has already received ten thousand public comments supporting permanent protection for Big Ivy. There's a Natan, Natanhala Piska Forest Partnership, including thirty diverse organizations, and it supports protecting all of Big Ivy as their top consensus priority. So this is an issue of people over profit, of community over corporations, and I recommend that the Buncombe County Commission should object to the Forest Service plan to log four thousand acres of Big Ivy. So I, in doing that, it supports protecting ancient forests, waterfalls, rare species, biological diversity, panorama, panoramic vistas, and clean water for our generation and future generations. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Got time for a couple more. Chelsea Waxstein Scott, who lives on thirty, Scott, yeah, sorry, I'm having trouble, it starts with a lot K in your last name? Yeah, coming up. Sorry, I'm just not good at reading handwriting sometimes.
Good evening. Thank you for listening to all of us speak and taking the time, and I want to thank the commission for, in the past, protecting this area from being logged. And I'm a resident of Barnardsville, and I walk through those forests, and they have a lot of value to me and many others. And as many people have said, old growth forests are irreplaceable, like, can't really put a value on this kind of ecology that took thousands of years to create and would take more than thousands of years to recreate once clearcut. And so I wanted to just put my voice into this commission meeting to oppose the National Forest Service plan to log this area, and just want to say that I am proud to be part of a county that protects the old growth forests, and so I appreciate that you all are going to do that. And, yeah, just knowing that this county will get much more value out of keeping these forests intact with all the benefits to people and plants and animals that this ecology and this ecosystem gives. So thank you all for hearing us today, and I'll say about that much.
All right, thanks, Scott. Okay. Rebecca, from Twenty-Five Lolly Lane. And I also just want to ask, so we are about out of time. Is there anybody else here who's on any other topics other than Big Ivy or the Dollar General? If there is anybody who wants to speak on any other topic, I'd ask you to come up to so to make sure those issues are heard to. All right, hey.
Hi. My name is Rebecca King, and I wanted to start out by thanking y'all for supporting Big Ivy in the Coleman Boundary and the Craggy area in the past. I'm an Asheville native, born and raised, Hall Creek. I currently live in Jupiter, which is right out in that area, and I spend, I can't tell you how much time in the, in the forest out there. It is very unique. The mountains here are just incredible, and they have my soul. That's the only way I know how to describe it. And I was really appalled that, you know, that they're still thinking about logging this area, and just wanted to come out and, and say I felt that way, and, and like other people have said, once something's gone, it's gone. But the whole climate change thing, you know, the IPCC just came out with a report, I think it was yesterday, we're now reaching a point where human beings are going to be having a harder time to adapt to climate change, so we don't need to be logging more. And I know a lot of people suffered in the communities all around. When Fred came through, the crazed, you know, once-in-a-hundred-year tropical storm that flooded so many areas, including areas up in the Coleman Boundary. You know, when we keep logging and taking our carbon sinks away, they're going to get worse, and it's going to erode, and it's just a feedback loop. And I just would like to ask the commission, I appreciate what y'all have done, and I'd like your continued support and come together with the community, with all, everybody in our community, to find a way to protect this land. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks, Rebecca. All right, we've spent an hour and taken public comment. So we're, we're out of time to take more. We do have other county commission business we need to take care of this evening, but I just want to say thanks to everyone who came out. As we mentioned before, the commission plans to take up the Big Ivy issue at our next county commission meeting. The county is formally on the record, supporting protection of Big Ivy and designation of the whole area of Pisgah there as a national scenic area, as well as the Wilderness Study Area being protected as wilderness. So thanks for all you're doing. We appreciate it. We support you. This is a completely unique area of our beautiful Blue Ridge Mountains, so we're, we're with you, and we'll do anything we can to support it. Thanks for coming out tonight. If folks want to stay, you're welcome to, but you don't have to. So if you'd like to, if you'd like to leave, feel free to, and again, thanks for coming out. All right. We appreciate everybody coming out on all the different issues. Folks took time to share with us, so thank you. All right. Ms. Pender, any items on the county manager's report?
Just two quick reminders, sir. First, I want to remind the board that today, we actually released the RFP, the Request for Proposals, for our next round of COVID recovery funding. We have a remainder from the fifty million, about twenty-seven million available for awards. You gave us ten specific categories, and folks can go on the website and do that. It is available until April twelfth is the deadline to submit a proposal. Also, starting on Friday, the Southern Conference Basketball Tournament is back in town. This is the twenty-third year that we've hosted it here in Buncombe County. So I just want to remind the community to get out and support it. There's different activities going on. There will be the Downtown Dribble on Saturday, as well as recognition for our social work appreciation. That's going to be on Friday, and Hometown Heroes on Monday. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, we have no items in our old business. Under new business, the first item is a resolution authorizing the execution of special warranty deeds to Buncombe County Board of Education, and Michael Free will present this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. This is a, a simple one that doesn't come around very often. We have two resolutions, two separate items. I put them together as such because the authority and reasoning for the Asheville City Schools' conveyance and agreements with Asheville City Schools is only slightly different from that with the Buncombe County Schools. First, for the Buncombe County School, Buncombe County has owned the property where Eblin Intermediate is located since two thousand nine, acquired the property for financing purposes, and then leased back to the county schools for their operations, triple-net type lease. That financing has concluded. North Buncombe High School property, forty-six acres, the county has owned since two thousand and six, and those were for some projects up there in North Buncombe several years back. Those are, again, for financing purposes, and those financing documents have all been paid in full. As for the property with the Asheville City Schools, that's IRB Jones Elementary. Here's the difference, that was acquired for permitting and administrative purposes to get the construction done over there. That construction is completed, so it's in order to convey that property back. So both of these are on. I would just ask that the board, if it's your desire, just to convey these back, just one resolution at a time, as presented. If there's any questions, I would be happy to try to answer. And we also have a list, if you're curious. There's a number of other properties the county owns, eight or ten, which are under bond documents from two thousand ten and fifteen, which are going to be paid off over the next twenty years, but we have those on the schedule, and they're the RVAMAX. So if there's any interest in that, those are the other packages we have, ranging due dates from twenty twenty-five through as far as twenty forty.
All right, thank you, Mr. Free.
Thanks, Max.
Commissioners, is there a, is there a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the execution of special warranty deeds to Buncombe County Board of Education?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Is there a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the execution of non-warranty deed to the Asheville City Board of Education?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you, Ms. Free. Next up is consideration of a resolution authorizing the execution of an amendment to the design-build-construction contract between Buncombe County and AstroTurf Corporation. Tim Love, our interim Recreation Services Director, will present this item, which we had a presentation about at our briefing meeting recently.
That's correct. Thank you, commissioners. Good evening. So this evening, I'll present an update to you. Also joined by John Hudson, who will present information on the budget amendment as needed. There are two of them. But additionally, I have Ronnie Lunford here to talk about any of the specific questions about the construction related to the project. But we'll go ahead and get started. This item was initially brought to you at the February fifteenth meeting at briefing, and so we're back before you to request action and answer any questions you have. Overview and request, as a refresher for members of the public and for the commission as well, the ANCA Recreation Destination is a recreation, sports, and greenway project. Creates connectivity between a number of assets, including Buncombe County Sports Park, Bob Lewis Ball Field, various educational institutions, including AB Tech, as well, as well as ANCA Intermediate, and ANCA Commerce Park, which is home to more than one thousand jobs here in ANCA. The project is a projected twelve million dollar project that was initially conceived in twenty eighteen, almost entirely funded by grants from a variety of sources, including the Federal Highway Association and the TDA. Project began in September of twenty nineteen and was estimated to be completed by September of twenty twenty-two, so this year. At this time, we're requesting Board of Commissioner approval for two particular items. The first is a resolution authorizing the county manager to enter into negotiations with AstroTurf Corporation, so just to execute the contract. But additionally, the approval of two budget amendments that related would result in authorizing seven hundred, seven hundred and thirty-five thousand towards the turf installation project. We can talk more about those as we move forward. As a refresher, this is an overview of the ANCA Recreation Destination. You can see that there's a greenway that's planned that goes across the property from the AB Tech campus to Warren Haynes Drive, which is a residential habitat community that you're probably familiar with. You can see at the top right corner, a number of fields. This represents the Buncombe County Sports Park. The fields that are in question for turfing are right there at the top, Fields One, Two, and Eight. Additionally, towards the middle of this project, you can see Bob Lewis Ball Park, which is a baseball complex, nonprofit-owned, where there has been field lighting installed that's been in place since twenty nineteen. As we consider the, the grant in its entirety, it's a really big project, fairly ambitious, that sought to do a number of things, and you can see those across the left. You know, improve the sports park, expand the sports park, put in lighting at Bob Lewis, but also create this trail, the ANCA Heritage Trail. I've listed each of the components, but on the far right also indicate which of those items were committed to in the grant agreement with the TDA. And the, the general answer is almost all of them, with some exception. The, the exception items, which we think are important to just talk about with this amenity, are the construction of a water line and a future restroom, as well as parking on Warren Haynes Drive. And none of these items were committed to in the early goings of the project. However, as we look at the project, think they're really important to consider as we move forward, to make this an amenity that's, you know, comfortable for folks that are, you know, bringing their- bringing their families to play soccer any day of the week, so. A couple images, you can see the current grass fields on the left. You may notice that these look a little bit worn. That's a problem from use over time. These fields, it takes a while for them to dry out as well, especially in the wintertime, which limits our ability to utilize the fields. The proposal is to put some synthetic turf. And we give you kind of a, an idea again where those fields would be on the right. When we talk about the improvements at the sports park, it's a lot about the turf, but it's also about the lights. Those two things combined allow us to play more regularly when the weather's bad, but also play later into the evenings when it gets darker. Got a few site designs here, again showing you the field layouts on the left, but then what those field layouts look as we, we do site designs and the construction for this project. One item that I'll, I'll touch on before we transition to project funding. You know, I simplify the conversation by just saying this is about turf and lights. There's other amenities that are baked into this cost. In particular, there, there's the installation of fencing around the, around the soccer fields to sort of contain soccer balls and children and things of that nature. Additionally, there's the installation of asphalt pavings that goes between the fields so that you have a, a place to walk between the fields. And there's the expansion of the parking lot. All of those are items that we can speak to in more detail as needed. But in, in general, going from, I believe Ronnie. Gotcha. So increasing our parking footprint from 28 to almost 80 spots. So substantial change. And so there's additional items in this cost outside of the immediate turf and lights that you've heard me describe. With that said, you've already heard me talk about this project funding. There have been some challenges. Since our last discussion on this, I've since presented to the Tourism Development Authority to give them an update on this project, but also the Woodfin Greenway Project. That's a part of our recurring annual reporting with them. That group heard the presentation, had some questions, and recommended this for funding, not within the normal cycle, but in, in, in advance of the, the normal TPDF cycle. But we can talk about those details more. So update on project funding. General story, costs have increased for a number of reasons. The initial grant was developed in 2018. It's been four years. A lot has changed. I'm stealing Ronnie's thunder here, but Ronnie expects typically a 6% increase in construction costs on an annual basis. So multiply that times four. Additionally, we've of course seen challenges related to, you know, COVID workforce and in particular niche construction fields. Additionally, Bullet 2, we've seen additional costs related to requirements for stormwater, as well as the tree ordinance. And again, these are not criticisms. These are just things that we didn't conceive in the original, original costs that have impacted our construction costs today. Insufficient revenue. Buncombe County has already put $430,000 into this project for a number of items, most notably the dog park, which is open. If you haven't been, it's at the top right as you drive into Buncombe County Sports Park. Dogs are utilizing it today. It's a pretty cool amenity. It's our first Buncombe County owned dog park, so commemorate that. Bullet 2, transportation grants. So one of the questions I frequently get on this, you know, it's a $12 million project. You've got $6 million socked away for a greenway. Why can't you spend that to make up for some of these cost overruns? And it's because we can't. These are restricted revenues that can be used. The transportation dollars, we can't just move them over, even if we'd like to. So where that leaves us, the additional grant revenue that is left over from the original $6 million grant from TDA, it's insufficient to cover our cost overruns, just a practical matter. With all that said, you know, we, we committed with this TDA grant to provide certain types of amenities. And basically, you know, put in field and lights that would serve as a recreational amenity, but that could also serve as an amenity to bring sports tourism to Buncombe County. We've seen the success of that with the Bob Lewis Park since 2019. For this year alone, in 2022, there's 35 sports tournaments planned at Bob Lewis Ball Field. So we're seeing kind of that impact already. We believe additional funding is available to support some of this project. But one of our recommendations would be to come back to commission and cut some of the, what we'll call extraneous projects from the project so that we can focus on the core, which is the turf and the lights. I presented this budget overview before, but I'll, I'll walk through it once again just to make sure that y'all are aware of some of the, the key cost drivers. So we have our, our main, our costs on the top left, our revenue towards the bottom. As we scroll over, we have our original estimates from 2018. So this was a grant submission. We have our current estimates in January of 2022. You can see the variance there. The, the big driver again in this cost is, is going to be related to turf. You can see where we've shuffled some costs to try and absorb some of this. You know, installing less lighting at the soccer fields, more lighting at the, at the ball, baseball fields. You can see where we've, you know, put in three-phase power to support the lights. That wasn't originally budgeted. There's a number of items that we've had to shuffle. When you look at the revenue, revenue has remained pretty constant. You know, TDA grant, 6 million, that's where it remains today. Transportation funding remains at 6 million. You can see an uptick in our overall costs of general fund dollars of about $430,000. So when we bring all this together, you know, how to like, when you mash these numbers together, the balance that we're short for this turf and light project is $734,000, which is at the bottom of the chart. So that's, that's the ask today before the board. But I wanted to, I wanted you to see how we got to that number. Again, this allows us to focus on kind of the core requirements that meet, meet the requirements of the grant, but also allows us to bring and improve our Buncombe County Sports Park, which addresses some other concerns that I know you've heard from residents in the community about access to fields and things of that nature. As we continue on the budget overview, again, I started off the presentation by showing you specific grant requirements, you know, those items that were committed to in a grant. Some of these items are still on the list and haven't been touched yet. And so that's what, that's what this table is about. You can see a challenge course, sports agility course, Yelp course, natural surface trails, things of that nature. Many of these items we haven't started yet, some we may not be able to start, candidly. One example of that would be the multi-sport field, originally conceived to be on, on a parcel that we, after further due diligence, realize is in a floodway. So we can't do a field there, but we can do other types of uses, like a trailhead, perhaps some gravel parking, something of that nature. On this chart, you'll also see a couple items that we've added to the list that I referenced earlier, specifically a water line, additional restroom, and parking. Those are the three bottom items on the costs. Those are items that we would recommend for consideration as we move forward because candidly, if we're putting in three new fields that we expect to be used all the time, it'd be great to have a restroom facility near those fields. Additionally, if we're going to have a trailhead on Warren Haynes Drive, it'd be great to have people, a place for people to park, rather than just let them park on the street in the neighborhood. When you bring all that together, the new balance we're looking at is about $2.5 million to bring all these projects to bear. Again, I think this needs to be value engineered and we need to think about what we're actually trying to pursue. And when I say we, I mean y'all as commission. But again, the primary item we're bringing before you today is to move forward with AstroTurf. And that's on the prior slide, the 734,000, which is at the bottom of this slide. Recommendations and next steps. The recommendation from staff is to allocate the funding, the requested funding, the 735,000, so that we can continue with this turf project. If we do not proceed at this point, clearly the project doesn't start. We run the risk of additional cost escalations as we go. Additionally, delays, you know, our ability to, to get on the fields, which I think is a goal for many. At this point, again, you know, we, with the allocation, we would execute the AstroTurf contract. We would continue sort of our value engineering exercise, continue to produce, pursue, rather, additional funding with grant entities. So that brings us to the request. It's the, what was, it's what I led with, which is a Board of Commissioner approval for one, the resolution, which would authorize the county manager to enter into a contract with AstroTurf, but also the approval of two budget amendments that would result in allocation of that additional funding. My closing slide shows you how the numbers tie. Again, those numbers at the top, when you add those together and then subtract out the TDA grant revenue, it gives you the balance at the bottom, which is at $734,000. I've talked a lot, I apologize. You've seen much of this before, but are there any questions?
I have a couple of questions. And one's just clarification. So the Bob Lewis Ballfields, you said that, who actually oversees that?
Bob Lewis Ballfields are, are baseball fields that are run by a nonprofit organization called ANCA Youth Sports Organization, which is EYSO for short. And they manage those fields, operate those fields. It's not a county asset. They were a partner in the original TDA grant application to create the overall destination.
Okay, thanks for clarifying. And you mentioned that you did go to the TDA. So was there potential for them to help out with funding for this? Can you speak to that?
They, and Commissioner Presley, feel free to chime in, but they recommended to send this to the TPDF Committee for consideration. One item that I, I would add to this is, you know, we were, I was, when I presented, stated that I was recommending what I was recommending tonight, so that, that's what they heard from me. Additionally, the, the TDA grant, the way it's structured, TDA can never exceed 50% of total project costs. And so we are, we're already at that point. So any additional costs would have to be sort of a, a one-for-one, if anything, in terms of cost share.
What should I have? I have, maybe I missed this, but what's, why are we behind? You know, I remember when this was passed, what, three years ago or whatever? But what, did COVID cause this or what? Why are we behind at this point?
To your point, Commissioner, I think COVID certainly derailed this project significantly in terms of the timing to negotiate it. That, that was one of the biggest factors in that.
And we can't go back to TDA?
I think we, we've gone to them and would expect to talk to them again. My, my action was to report out after this meeting to, to sort of see where we are. Again, you know, the, based on the TPDF guidelines, you know, any additional costs, TDA is already at their 50%, so any additional input from them would require revenue from another source.
All right, Commissioners, any other?
Yeah, and Tim, I guess can go ahead and say this was the largest project TDA is ever single, single project they've ever done, isn't it?
That's correct. It is the, the largest project for them, for sure. Additionally, on this particular project, they're, they're, they're the largest funder on this project.
Is there a motion on the resolution authorizing the amendment to the design build construction contract?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And can we do the budget amendments in a single motion or do we need two separate motions on that? Is there a motion to approve the budget amendments allocating $735,000 for the project?
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you so much for the updates and we look forward to seeing all this moving ahead. Okay, is there more on this item or the next item? Okay, all right. Next up, consideration of a budget amendment for the FY 2022 Joint Committee Recommended Projects. And we have John Hudson from the County Budget Office and Dick Wilmeth from, who's the VP of Business and Finance and CFO from AB Tech Community College, both with us this evening. Gentlemen, thanks for being with us.
So at the February 7th, AB Tech Buncombe County Joint Capital Advisory Committee meeting, committee approved the recommendation of two capital projects to begin in 2022. $150,000 was recommended to restore the stormwater management facilities behind the Hemlock Building on the Asheville Campus. Additionally, the committee recommended demolishing the Haynes Tower on the ANCA Campus. Staff anticipates the cost of this removal to be $3 million, accounting for some contingency. At the October 15th, 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting, the Board approved two projects at the ANCA Campus as part of the FY 2020 Joint Capital Recommended Projects. $75,000 was approved for ANCA Site Programmatic Capital Investments and $40,000 was approved for emergency relief. Those two projects are no longer needed and that budget can be returned to the Article 46 Sales Tax Capital Fund. I have Dirk Wilmeth here, if you have any questions regarding the specific projects.
Well, Commissioner Whitesides and I both sit on this committee and so I can speak some to it. The, the stormwater definitely is AB Tech being a good neighbor. And I'd love it, Dirk, if you might speak some to the, the Central Asheville Watershed Collaboration that you have going on with Riverlink that actually ties in with this. Do you want to speak some to that?
Yes, yes, I would. We, we have been collaborating with Riverlink. They're actually getting the grants, proposals together. And we have been able to leverage commitments that we've made to stormwater management, master planning on the Victoria Campus. So we're in the conceptual phase on that. And then also through the, as a result of reviewing and assessing the condition of our stormwater features throughout the Victoria Campus, we realized that the, one of the most pressing deficiencies has been the disintegration of the feature at Hemlock. And so we've got, that's a shovel-ready project. And we are using that to leverage other grant opportunities that Riverlink has submitted through the North Carolina Land and Water Conservancy, I believe it's called, as well as the City of Asheville's RFP related to ARPA funds. I know, I understand there's a lot of projects that have been proposed by that. But we felt this was one that would have a positive impact, both to the local community and that it would mitigate some of the flooding that results from the failure of that Hemlock project, as well as other waste, stormwater that's coming off of our many lots throughout the campus and rolling into the surrounding communities, then ultimately into the French Broad River. So that, that, that is a lot leveraging, leveraging situation. And that's why we felt this was an important first step in committing to correcting these, these problems.
Thank you for sharing more information on that. And Commissioner Whitesides, I think you've mentioned that you had visited the Haynes Tower as well?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we did visit the Haynes Tower. And well, Brownie, you were there too. Yeah, we were there. And I agree with what we need to do out there.
Thank you.
So I guess, Commissioner Wells, if I'm understanding it correctly and the, and the ordinance language correctly, is part of or all of that 150K for stormwater management, is that one of the recommend, or, or multiple recommended projects from the Central Asheville Watershed Restoration Plan?
No, it is, it is, it is, was outside of the scope of the original watershed plan, but it's not. I mean, in terms of the, the concept, it's not. Because it's at the, it's at the headwaters of the Hayth Branch. So because it was on our campus, that project didn't get entered our campus. And, and look at that before we were already investigating it with a, with our design civil engineers.
And let me clear it up. When you talk about Hayth Branch, that's the community that I live in. Fortunately, it doesn't affect any parcel of my land, either one. But it does, some of my neighbors have had problems with that. Yeah, then this would really go a long way to help clear, clear that up, yes.
And I believe it's accurate to say that the AB Tech Board of Trustees unanimously approved this and then our Joint Capital Commission also was in unanimous support as well.
Right, is there a motion? Is there a motion regarding the proposed budget amendments recommended by the FY 20, recommended by the Joint Committee for Capital Projects at AB Tech Community College?
Motion to approve the budget amendment.
Second. Further discussion? All right. Well, we appreciate you being with us this evening to make these recommendations. Appreciate the members of the County Commission and the community who serve on this joint, jointly appointed capital planning committee from AB Tech Community College and the county. I think this has been a great process to help link these projects through together and bring forward good recommendations. So appreciate everyone's work and due diligence around these projects. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you. And John Hudson remains with us to talk to us about a budget amendment for Communicable Disease and Infection Prevention Mobile Team.
So in this particular amendment, Buncombe County received notice of additional funding approved in the state budget for this year of $628,114 to support communicable disease programs and to expand communicable disease surveillance, detection, control, and prevention activities. This funding is effective for this current fiscal year through the next fiscal year. Therefore, we would like to put these funds into the Grants Fund, which is a multi-year fund. Public Health Directors requesting this funding be used to start a new mobile unit team. You may recall that we, you authorized a purchase with this current year budget of mobile unit for Health and Human Services. They expect that delivery of that unit to take place in June or July, and they would like to ramp up staffing that unit with six grant-funded positions, a public health nurse supervisor, two public health nurses, two emergency management specialists, and administrative support associate. Any questions?
Just a quick clarification question. Can you talk through some of the ways that this mobile unit will be used, both responsive to COVID-19, but then as we move forward?
So can I ask Public Health Stacy to come up and answer some specific questions?
John was ready. But I'm happy to tell you a little bit about how we're going to use this. So you're, you are aware that we're going to be getting the mobile unit. So initially, this is going to be a continuation and extension of our COVID response. We have learned in COVID that mobilization was key. Key to our testing, key to our vaccine efforts, continues to be key to our vaccine efforts. But up until this point, it's been sort of piecemeal together, sort of taking teams and taking them out versus having our own type of vehicle or unit that we can deploy with our team. So initially, you're going to see it used for COVID testing, COVID vaccine, and then as we transition into, we can use it for other outbreak situations. We can use it at times for other vaccines, like as we get ready for flu season and for equity outreach for our historically marginalized populations, our low-income populations or our rural communities, because we can take our clinic now out into the community. And so we're envisioning this, working with our homeless providers around hepatitis A vaccine and flu vaccines. We're envisioning this at time, as I said, into rural communities just with, you know, just with flu vaccine. And then as we move along, adding other services into it. So while we're out there doing either vaccine or even STD screening, those types of things, that we ask other partners within HHS or within Buncombe County or within our community as a whole to join us. So if we're out there doing vaccine, that our sister organization at Social Work or Economic Services can come out as well and provide services and provide information. Or our WIC, our Women's Infant and Children Program, would be able to come out with us as well and serve populations who are eligible. And then again, incorporating the community as well, that we would be sort of the, the unit and sort of the big thing that was happening, but others would be able to come around and offer services and information and create a real wraparound type of unit.
That's terrific. Thank you.
And I just have one follow-up. First of all, I'm excited about the mobile unit. I think that's wonderful that you're going to be able to go out into communities. Can you clarify, I think it used the terminology time-limited positions. Can someone speak to that part, please?
So right now, the funding is for current fiscal year and the next fiscal year through June 2023. Rather than ask for six new positions in the general fund unrelated to this year's budget, we have the funding for this year and next year. So we are putting them in the multi-year Grants Fund. And, and then once this, once they've worked out the kinks and they know exactly what they need, they'll make it, they can make an ask for planning in the FY 24 budget to add these positions to the general fund.
I'll jump in. So time limited simply means it's grant-funded, and when that grant ends, we can end the position. But if it's successful, we would need to ask the commission to fund it. So when person is hired, they hear right up front, it is grant-funded, and the grant is only for two years. So this position is guaranteed for two years.
And I guess I'll just, sorry, Bronny. I'll, I'll ask Commissioner Wells' question just, just a different way. I guess the intent when we went forward with the mobile unit would have been to hire these same exact folks through the general fund this year, but it's just that the state found some extra money under the right drawer.
So we'll use other people's monies first, so to speak. So we'll use the state monies first. And as we're, to John's point, as we work out the kinks on this, then we can come to the board and ask for funding from the general fund. But since we have this funding source, we want to use that first.
I just wanted to clarify, there's nothing unique about these positions or different due to the money.
Just that we have funding, and so we wouldn't tell the commissioners or we wouldn't tell the employees that this is a full-time, it is a full-time job, 40 hours a week, but because we have a funding source that could end, we would tell them it's two years, and then we'll have to come to the board and get authorization before we can actually guarantee them that there's a county position.
All right. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the budget amendment.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much. All right, Commissioners, we have consideration of appointments and reappointments to the Library Board. And Mr. Joyner, two of these are new appointments, and one of them is a reappointment, is that right? All right. And these are the folks who, these are all the, there's, there's three positions and three people applied total. All right.
I move to approve Josiah Rogers, Julie Reisdorf, and Ruth O'Donnell to the Library Board.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Mr. Fu, is there any need for a closed session? Sorry, excuse me. All right, we've got a couple of announcements. On March 15th at 3:00 PM, the Commissioners will hold their briefing meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. On March 15th at 5:00 PM, the Commissioners will hold a regular meeting at 200 College Street in Room 326 in downtown Asheville. Is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye. All right, we're adjourned.